Okay, we will now reconvene the City Council's special meeting for today, February 14th. Are there any final actions?
No final actions.
No.
Okay, we will adjourn the special meeting. And I call to order the City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, February 14th, with the Court, please, Capitol.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Here.
Rorba.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchirla.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here. Vice Mayor, Chalamchirla, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Item number four is being continued through the February 28th council meeting, and there are two additional information transmitters for item 13, a copy which had been provided to you previously, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay, thank you. The Court, please call the next item.
Your next item this evening is Business from the Floor, and you currently have no request to speak under this item. That's right.
Will the Court please call the next item?
Yes, so our next item this evening will be Scheduled Presentations. The first item is a Resolution of Commendation honoring Chris Corda and his retirement as owner of the hacienda del Rio for 32 years, and Madam Mayor, you did have a request to speak from Loretta Hedinger on this item.
Okay.
Come on down.
Hello.
I very much enjoyed reading the resolution in honor of Chris Corda, and I just wanted to add something to it. I mean, there are a lot of things that Chris has done through the years, but one that is really important is that he was part of the Citizens Committee that met for four years to create the regulations for the historic district that have rescued the residential area from the decline it was headed into, into the wonderful place that it is to live today, and I couldn't let this evening pass without everyone knowing what a wonderful thing Chris did in helping on that project. That's it.
Thank you, Loretta.
Chris, come on down.
Chris, you are a great guy. So I first met Chris in December 2014, when I was in, under construction to open up my business, and there was an end-of-the-year celebration for the business owners on the block and the businesses, so those owners of the buildings and the businesses. And I first met Chris, Chris knew I was opening up a Mexican taqueria, he's the owner of a Mexican restaurant, and he was very kind, he was very, he offered to help, help in any kind of way that he can as I was in construction, and so I just remember thinking, he's a really nice guy. So, Chris, tell everybody, tell everybody, is owning a restaurant living the dream?
It was for a long time, but I couldn't talk you out of going after it. You tell us, is it living the dream?
Oh, yeah, I tell everybody, is living the dream. Okay, so, Chris, I'm gonna read the Resolution of Commendation. This is honoring Chris Corda on his retirement as owner of Folsom's hacienda del Rio for 32 years. Whereas Chris Corda has been a proud resident of Folsom for more than 35 years and has owned and managed la hacienda del Rio restaurant for more than 32 years. Whereas Chris realized his interest in the restaurant industry during a career planning assignment in high school. After community college, he decided to major in hospitality management at Cal Poly Pomona, and whereas the hacienda del Rio restaurant is a well-known landmark in Folsom's historic district, which Chris describes as always feeling like home, and whereas the hacienda del Rio restaurant has generously donated back to the Folsom community to support local causes. And Chris has served as president of the Sacramento chapter of the California Restaurant Association and as a treasurer and president of the Sutter Street Merchant Association. And after working in the restaurant industry for 50 years, Chris looks forward to his retirement, especially to having weekends and holidays off and spending time with his partner Sherry, his children Cameron and Candace, and his five grandchildren. Now, therefore, I, Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor for the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the residents of this community, do hereby thank Chris Corda for being a part of the fabric of Folsom and congratulate him on his retirement for 32 years as owner of the hacienda del Rio. Chris, you have been an integral part of the historic district, and so many people are feeling the loss of you and retiring, of course, but also that you have been such, you've created memories for people through anniversaries and holidays and special events and the fantastic margaritas, so we wish you all well on your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I do feel blessed to have been able to do what I love to do, which was run restaurants in this beautiful community with outstanding progress in the historical district over the 32 years. It's come from here to way up here, and it is a jewel of Folsom, and the City Council and really all the people in the City of Folsom have been a pleasure to have come in the restaurant, to watch grow, it's been a remarkable experience, and it's a community that we plan on being in for a long time to come, and it just offers a lot to everybody, and I like, I enjoy seeing half my grandkids that live in Folsom involved in sports and soccer and all the different activities that go, so just an amazing community, and it's great to be a part of it, and there's really no place else I'd rather be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, your next item this evening will be the second scheduled presentation. This is the Folsom Tourism and Economic Development Corporation Quarterly Report.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I wore pink in honor of Valentine's Day, Happy Valentine's Day to all of you, and I have to say that I love that you all are talking about economic development, because it is really exciting. I had prepared some comments, but I decided since it's Valentine's Day, I'm just gonna speak from the heart tonight, so. So, in 1994, then-Mayor Bob Holderness decided that Folsom needed its first economic development plan, and I had the privilege of being able to sit on that, probably Chris was on it too, for namesake, but we did not have an economic development plan at that time. We came up with 10 particular things we were supposed to do, and one of them was to formalize how economic development should be done, and it was recommended that we do a private-public partnership. Tom Lane, a loaned executive from Intel, helped write that particular document, and as a result of that, in 1996, we formed the Folsom Economic Development Corporation and have been responsible for economic development in Folsom since then. In early 2000, as part of an economic development tool, we also formed a Business Improvement District for Tourism, because Sacramento was forming one, was asking our hotels to be part of it. Our hotels didn't see any value in that, and we put them all together to form a Business Improvement District for Tourism in Folsom, and that today still stands. It originally had a five-year horizon, where they renewed it for another five, and then in 2013, we renewed it for 20 years, so. Those are two significant economic development things that have transpired in this community. We would not be able to do economic development in this community without a great team. I want to introduce Sally Howard Buchanan and Laura Fickle. Phil's not here tonight, because Tuesday's date night, and heaven forbid that we ever trump his date night, so what a great team, and also, part of our Choose Folsom team is working always on economic development for purposes of our community. So, I thought I'd share with you, I don't like to read slides, but this one in particular is from the California Association of Local Economic Development, and I think it epitomizes exactly what economic development is today. It used to be a different way of approaching it, if you talk to Barry Broom or people in the region, they don't do what we call community development. Economic development now has expanded into something much more, where we create wealth from which community benefits are realized. It's more than jobs program, it's an investment in growing your economy and enhancing the prosperity and the quality of life of our residents. So it's beyond just what was originally envisioned for economic development. It used to be business attraction, retention, and expansion, and that was it. It didn't really care about the community and the quality of life. It's now expanded beyond that, and that's why our role has expanded. So we created, in, with a lot of work in December 2022, a 2035 Vision of Folsom's Economic Development Future, and in that, we came up with why communities invest in economic development. We, as economic development director, or developers, are always concerned about helping to make our business successful, but also through that increases flow of revenue to the city, so that you can decide how to spend that money to benefit our communities, whether it's quality of life, housing, public safety, infrastructure, or parks. So, we are really working hard to drive more revenue, so that the government can provide the quality of life that your residents deserve. We came up with six key objectives. The first is attraction, which I won't read all of these, but within that, you know, really, we work with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council for outward economic development attraction. We don't go out and travel around the country recruiting people, we rely on them, and then we work with them. Laura and Phil attend the GSEC meetings and work through those. We also have formed the 50 Economic Alliance, which is 13, or 12 zip codes between Rancho Cordova and Placerville, to work cooperatively on that sub-region as to how we can all work together, because businesses don't have boundary. We have some things in Rancho Cordova that we don't have in Folsom, we don't have warehouse space, they do. We have Class A buildings, maybe they don't. El Dorado has other things, so we work cooperatively with them on a joint marketing effort for our sub-region. Secondly, is retention. We do two business walks a year, but we also do corporate calling, and we're also working with the city planning and permitting department on a concierge, concierge program where we assist businesses that are looking to maybe open their business. Community development and civic infrastructure, you know, we focus on, we're proud to be part of the city's strategic plan on Thursday, but also, we are, you'll hear here in a few minutes about economic zones that Councilmember Sarah Aquino brought up some time ago, we've done some follow-up on that, and I'll share with you a little bit about that. Tourism is a huge opportunity for us. We just finished a strategic plan on what could Folsom's brand be, and it was recommended that we focus on outdoor recreation, and now we're doing the next phase, which is what kind of amenities could Folsom have that would position us more as a destination? Because, you know, when you have tourism, people stay in the hotels, and when they stay in the hotels, they spend their money, and they spend it on restaurants, they spend it on retail, they spend it on entertainment, and so it's really important that we have a great tourism strategy, because tourism really is an economic development tool. The next one is entrepreneurial growth and innovation, some of you have been involved. Granite School is starting to see some traction, as is Granite City Co-Working, we're working cooperatively with them together. I know you've heard over the last couple weeks from Rich Foreman about startup Folsom, so we're bringing all of them together to figure out how we can create the ecosystem that makes Folsom really an innovation center. And then the marketing communications and research, we're proud that you started with the River District, we've been working on that for quite some time, the Central Business District, but we also just purchased some software called Zartico, which will allow us to be able to track when people are spending their money, where they're spending it in Folsom, so we're excited about that. But as you can see, there's a lot to be done, there's six objectives, you know, and really, this is a vision for 2035. We decided that we would establish five key goals, I mean, five-year goals for ourselves, and as you can see, they're pretty aggressive, 10 new companies coming to town, three company expansions, $400 million in investment. We did this about seven years ago, and we were able to accomplish it in three years, so we're renewing that commitment to have some key factors that will be measured by. We decided that we needed to have a work planned by quarter, so as you asked us, we'll be coming back in March to report on how we're doing each quarter for you, but we've outlined our objectives, we already have made progress, quite a bit of progress on quarter one, but some of the stuff that's in quarter three, we're doing right now, so we're working towards that diligently, so that we'll be able to come back to you with some measurable results. While we're doing that, nothing stops us from doing the other things that we have been doing all along, whether it's working with Folsom Lake College, with our major employers to develop workforce programs, we, we're working with people on housing for those that need to work here, we have our leadership program, there's a number of things that we do in the meantime while we're continuing to work on the, on our key strategies. But what does all this mean, and what's the economic impact of such job creation? As you can see, you know, between direct, indirect, and induced, over the five-year period, if we hit these benchmarks, it equates to about $1.4 billion in economic impact to our community, so we're pretty excited about that. So, I wanted to focus a little bit on economic development zones. As I said earlier, Councilmember Aquino had mentioned this at some time when she and I first met, I think we had seven zones. I sat down with Christine Brainard, and we were working through several different iterations. We came up with 14 different zones, they don't mimic just political districts, they are strictly economic nodes, so to speak. When we started brainstorming different opportunities, there was over 100 different opportunities, some of them probably won't flesh out, but as you develop your strategic plan, I hope that you will take some of this information and consider it as part of the strategic plan, because I think they're all huge opportunities for us to grow our economy here in Folsom. So, beg, borrow, and stealing from Cal Ed, here is what it takes. It takes collaboration between the community, our elected officials, the government, and business, and really, the five factors is that we understand a realistic vision, we assess what we have, we identify Folsom champions to help us communicate that, we create a strategic plan, like you're doing, and then foster a business-friendly climate, and with that, we can end up with really positive results. Also, you know, economic development, growing local economies really does increase our quality of life. I think a lo, for a long time, there was a disconnect between economic development and our residence and economic development and our quality of life, and now it's all being tied together, because through a strong economy, a lot of the amenities, a lot of the services that are offered by the city can be afforded, so we're excited about it. Remember that, you know, choose Folsom, you know, if you visit, they often connect and they prosper, so. I'm happy to answer any questions, and look forward to coming back in March with an update on the quarterly progress.
Some feedback on Cal Ed. Christine Brainard and I took a weekend-long conference with them about a year, year and a couple months ago, and it was one of the best, you know, conferences that I recommend to my colleagues in terms of just being able to get an intro into economic development and the impact it has on your community, but also just the financial impact that it has to the city of Folsom. So, it was very positive, it was good, and all the information that I get from them, magazines, it just really, I think, broaden my ability to give it and understand economic development and being a constituent of the city of Folsom. But I do have one question, Joe, so does Folsom Lake College have also an ecosystem growing their startups?
They do, you know, they have the Makerspace at Folsom Lake College, they're talking about trying to move that into the new science building that they're constructing. They have kind of some interesting things, they started a, what's it called when you, Michael, no, when you, when you make beer, you, and wine, you need fermentation. They have fermentation programs, they're working with the wineries in El Dorado County, really a great, they have the Makerspace, and we're working with them, placing them with local employers for startup stuff, so, yeah, they really are a great asset to have in the community.
Yeah, I had a coffee with Art Pimentel yesterday, and I was really encouraged to see big vision, big dreams, bold, who wants to go, and I think that he is at Folsom Lake College, I think, renders that attention to the community.
Yeah.
I have a quick question, Joe. When you go to the Choose Folsom website, it says, "Choose Folsom powered by the Greater Folsom Partnership," so can you just provide some clarity, so we understand the structure? Is Choose Folsom a slogan, and the Greater Folsom Partnership is the organization, or is it, that's a part I'm a little confused on.
So, the, there are three separate organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, the Tourism Bureau, and the Economic Development Corporation all have separate, are separate nonprofits. About five years ago, we decided that we needed to share with everybody that it's all co-located, and so we came up with the Greater Folsom Partnership, and then most recently, within about two years ago, they said, "There is no such entity, why do we call it?" So the brand is Choose Folsom, visit is for tourism, connect is for the chamber, and prosper is for economic development. So, there is no choose entity, it's a brand, and their Greater Folsom Partnership has gone bye-bye. Yeah, there is no legal entity called the Greater Folsom Partnership.
No requests.
Any questions for Joe?
All right, thank you.
The Court, please call the next item.
All right, your next item this evening is an update by the Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused regarding homelessness. No, you're okay, I just sent it up.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the Folsom community. My name is Jeanne Schuman, I'm from Jake's Journey Home, and I'm also a stakeholder in the Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused. We're here to give you an update regarding the alliance. It's been in existence for just over two years. It's a partnership between Folsom City and its nonprofits and volunteers, aimed at connecting and collaborating to help prevent homelessness in Folsom. You can see all the wonderful entities here. So, we're solution-based services, we're all just a heartbeat away from the tragedy of homelessness. The difference is in the available support systems when trauma surfaces. The goal is to make transitioning from unhoused to housed a seamless movement. We connect with our folks, we develop respect, assist in the transition, and we want to shift from emergency assistance to prevention of homelessness. So our first stakeholder here is the Folsom Police Department. The Community Crime Suppression Unit is the one that assists with the alliance. It's comprised of a team of two police officers and a police sergeant, and it's dedicated to preserving and improving the quality of life in Folsom. However, at this time, there is only one sergeant and one officer, and they're doing a class act in maintaining our quality of life, and I had the opportunity to do another ride-along with the officers, and it also helped to reinforce the number of unhoused that we do have here in Folsom. So, each one, I tasked each of the alliance members to send me something, so that we can read as to what they do in terms of the alliance. It says, "So Powerhouse Ministries," you can see there, that's in a nutshell what they do, "but Josh Levine asked me to read, 'Powerhouse Ministry currently has 54 beds for men, women, and children and youth in our community who are experiencing homelessness, addiction, and abuse. We provide in each instance a two-year immersive program, helping our residents overcome their unique challenges. They also offer emergency services and crisis intervention via their drop-in center. Some examples are laundries, shower, personal care items, rental assistance, medical, and legal." The, he says, "The office also hosts and coordinates services with the SAC Self-Help Housing Navigator. In addition to, they work closely with the Folsom Police Department and Behavioral Health Services and partnering with FOF2," that's, that shortened version for our Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused, "organizations to coordinate care." And the next one was HART. Judy wrote this nice words here, she's the president of HART. "One of the greatest opportunities of the alliance is to allow each of the groups working in the homeless community to share resources and to learn more about the distinct activities of each member group. It also offers a place to learn about changes in the dynamics of our community and what new resources in the city and the county are available. It provides a space where we can get encouragement and embrace the goodness we each represent." And also on, just letting everybody know, HART of Folsom is assisting those experiencing homelessness in Folsom, mentoring towards self-sufficiency and greater independence, and at this time, HART is also running their winter shelter. The next stakeholder is SAC Self-Help Housing, that's Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Carrie Jones is the Assistant Director of Outreach, and Jamie Peña is our Folsom Navigator. And if you look at the slide up there on the top left, there's a few things I want to point out, because there's a lot here. The Folsom Outreach Navigator works with the unhoused population in Folsom, as well as partners in the community to meet the growing needs. And flip to the bottom, her hours and her areas where she's at, three drop-in days each week, two at Powerhouse Ministries, and one at the Folsom Library, weekly ride-along with the Folsom Police Department, they, she attends the HART of Folsom Winter Sanctuary one time a week, and resource research to maintain housing and treatment options near Folsom. And she also assists with the feeding the fellows, the Thursday night meal. Their note for numbers in 2022, we worked with 90 different individuals in the City of Folsom, and speaking about what they work with. Next entity would be Jake's Journey Home. We do mobile response for wraparound services, and you can see our list of things that we do, the assessments with HMIS, Amtrelo, referral services for addiction and mental health, school resources, veteran assistance, we work with the VA for benefits and DD214s, and we're assisting people in cleaning up their criminal record, sobriety recovery, we're 211 resource referral now, and we also work with the fragile communities and the underserved. So, this is just a chart of, these are some of the drivers that lead to homelessness. You lose a job, a family member, a trauma that is life-altering, couple that with the lack of the proper supports, and a lot of our folks are experiencing not just one, but almost all of them. This is, this is a study, if you look at the bottom of the slide there, it says, "Through SAC Self-Help," I'm sorry, SAC Step Forward, SSF, estimates that during a year, between 16,500 and 20,000 different individuals will experience homelessness in Sacramento County." That's a lot. And then Sacramento County did a PIT count in 2022. PIT is Point in Time. They get different volunteers from different cities, and they go out and literally count the unhoused person, the unsheltered person, so they physically see them, they count them, and that's it. So if you look at the list there, the City of Sacramento had almost 4,500 people that were unsheltered on that one point in time, and you go down the list and you see Folsom. Folsom registered with 20. My count is, it's between 20 and 35 that are permanently and literally unhoused in Folsom. They were born here, they were raised here, and they're living unhoused here. That doesn't, this, these numbers also do not account for the transient population that you see on a daily basis walking through Folsom. Last, in the last two years, we've encountered more than 150 of those people, they come in on the light rail, they come in here, look for services, and what we do, because we don't have a major service system here, we find out where they're from, we send them back to that community with a day pass, and we've coordinated, you know, you speak to this person, we give them phone numbers and names, and they coordinate with that person, so they go back to their community. So, Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused also does community service and cleanup. This is one of the encampments that we all got together and cleaned, and this was actually one of the clients who is now And this was actually one of the clients who is now housed in veteran housing. That's the after effect. It said, you may be thinking, oh, my gosh, believe me, this is nothing compared to the outlying areas. We are blessed here. This is in Sacramento. This is just a normal piece of property. And this is what it looks like all over. So when I say we're blessed, our crime suppression unit, Fish and Wildlife, they all gather with the alliance and other volunteers to help clear our cities of this. So very lucky. This is a collage of some pictures of things that go on with the Folsom Alliance. We have community service and YK, you're a big leader for that, helping give some of our folks some jobs, community service. We appreciate that. Interaction with the police department. We have memorials that we've set up for people. We have the the Day Center that I move around with the veteran stand downs. So most of these folks are housed. Some have been sent back to Alaska, some are in Sacramento living. There's a few on here that we've lost through drug use. I think the most beautiful thing in the world is watching the light come on in someone's eyes after they've been lost in the dark for so long. All the amazing work that the alliance does, we have learned that trauma is at the very heart of the initial problem that led into homelessness. So we continue to fight for the voiceless. One of them is my son Joey, Jake's brother. He suffered unthinkable trauma at age seven and spent a life trying to undo it. He passed in 2021 from fentanyl. He always called every day to say, hey, Mom, I love you, hope you're doing okay. And what you're doing is really good. Trauma happens to really good people and it's up to us to help and to be kind. Couple of recommendations, I saw the last city council meeting. And just to maybe talk about a few future recommendations from a nonprofit that operates on a shoestring budget, thinking of ways to garner help without inflating our budgets. The CAPS program, I personally went through it, wonderful program. There's lots of people that if it were advertised more, they would get more involved and do additional things, whether it be working, you know, doing the minutia work with Folsom PD or just they're out there. It's just a matter of getting, you know, asking them, say, hey, you want to try this? The other is doing an internship with college students. I went through and got my criminal justice degree. And, you know, having to volunteer for the police department or the district attorneys, getting that letter of recommendation upon graduation and wanting to go into a master's program, it goes a long way for students. And Jake's Journey Home, we've been doing the mobile assist services for better than two years now. And we're working on creating a permanent life skills center for folks. You know, not reinventing any kind of a wheel, just to take what we have and make it better and more stable. That's it. I'm going to turn it back to the city. I appreciate you listening and.
I have a comment. Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't have any questions. You guys are doing a magnificent job. And it's really wonderful to hear that we've made progress in spite of it being a persistent, you know, treadmill of activity that has to happen. And I'm extremely grateful to all of you who are a part of it. Thank you.
Appreciate that. It's been, it's been a haul. But we finally have realized when we sat in the room and we realized everybody works with different people and, you know, in different grades of homelessness and we figured that out and we put it all together. And now it's cohesive. It's a good thing.
Agreed.
Right. Now I want to echo the same thing, what, you know, Mike was saying. I know some of you are sitting there, you know, it's so hard to run those programs and, you know, taking them to hospitals and county services, but you guys are doing awesome. It's a hundred percent volunteering activities. I have a question. I know Elaine is helping us to get that Bidwell Studios, those 24 units, and some of them is heart holding that, right, for a good reason? How is that working? Is anything we can do different? At least through us, a recommendation from the city, right? We need some inputs on that one. If you have any, because the people who are living there are very close to the same category, right? They they come out and, right, we want to make sure they're going to fly as a good birds from that place, not again coming to the community with some drug heavy use and those kinds of things. It's important, you know, Folsom taxpayers' money, we invested little over, you know, two and a half, three millions, even though that is a loan, right? State has given that home key grant of close to $4 million. It's all our money.
So just to clarify that, four, four of those rooms are Heart of Folsom?
I can't speak to the four rooms.
Yeah, that's fine. In general, because.
I can speak to the Hope Cooperative because we do interface with a lot of the folks there. It's, you know, I believe in housing. I believe in housing. But I believe in housing along with mandatory services to make you a successful person. It takes a whole circle. And I think that's where we differ in terms of methodology for for taking care of homelessness. So does that, does that make sense?
It is helping, you know, at the end, you know, those 24 homes, houses are the rooms, suites, whatever we call, 24 people are living in there, right? A year or two or three from now, they should be a productive citizen joining our community.
I wish that was our Folsom people, our 20 to 30 people in there.
You're more than welcome.
So just for, just for clarification, the Hope Cooperative is not a part of the alliance's effort? So I just want to make that, it's a separate entity. It's, we have no control over decisions that are made or what happens there.
It is worth noting, though, there was an article in the newspaper the other day about, I'm going to use the word shelter. I'm not exactly sure how they described it. But it was in partnership with Hope Cooperative. And that facility had requirements for sobriety. And I don't know why they can do that at that one, but they don't do it at this one where it's, it's supposed to be low barrier, right? So it would be interesting to know that. Mind you, the services are there. All the services are there, but they have to want to take those services. There's no mandatory threshold for them to get them.
Yeah.
I just want to make one.
I have a question.
Okay.
So you and I met a couple, maybe it was a couple of weeks ago. I don't know, time flies. So I know that you have kind of goals for your organization in the future. So what is your next goal kind of around, we had discussed a day center and and I'd like to kind of hear your thoughts on that in public setting.
Our next goal is to have a permanent day center. And that day center would involve the ability for our folks to come in, charge a phone, fix a meal, take a shower and sit down with them to get them into services. So it's the ability to sit and relax during the day and not be out and about and start working with them with a life skill plan.
One of the things that you mentioned when we talked was their ability then to get their medication. And that's also a problem, an obstacle for a lot of them. So what is your next step? Because I feel like you're a doer. So what's your next step with realizing that?
We are looking for a building. And once we set that up, then we will be able to bring in the services that we need, i.e. a pharmacy that would be able to monitor, bring in them and monitor. We have medical that we can bring in from Sacramento. All the services are there. It's a matter of saying, we have it here, we need someone to report here for that.
And I know some of our residents concerned would be where that would be. What are your ideas for that?
My ideas are I don't like being center stage. I prefer to be, you know, off the beaten path, an older commercial building that, excuse me, that would not impact businesses, it would not impact people going to the park with their family. You know, we do our business and we do it off to the side and I prefer to continue that.
And actually, and the the hope then would be actually drawing them a little bit outside of our inner circle in Folsom. Kind of, not our inner circle, but the inner workings.
The majority, I will tell you, though, the majority of folks that you see are, it's considered transient population. They come in, they walk about, they do what they do, and then they leave. And those are the folks that, you know, but but our folks are pretty much kind of hidden off to the side, you know, and not really the problem per se. So it would be nice to have an area that they could go and just sit and relax in the sun and it's not in the middle of, yeah, that's all.
They also do a really good job of taking care of the environment, taking care of the places where they live.
Absolutely, absolutely. They have no qualms about. They also helped when we did the picnic bench rejuvenation in the park. They were helping.
So I just want to give a little feedback. When you told me that pit count was 20, I went, wow. So I haven't been on a ride along since last summer when Zalaya was a sergeant. And so I went with Sergeant Greenberg last week with you, Ginny. And I was just really surprised to see how clean the open spaces are and how we happen to come across individuals from, from the Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife. And they do their, they do a really good job of picking up and cleaning up abandoned camps. So I really give a shout out to Sergeant Greenberg and Sergeant Jones, who have done a phenomenal job of sustaining and to really helping to reduce the numbers. Because two years ago, it was not, it was not a healthy place. But now, in last week's ride along, it was just, it was surprising. And I, and kudos to you. Every camp that we went to, you knew all their names, you knew their background, you knew their story, you knew their addiction, and they all met you with warmth. And so I think, really, I think your relationship with them is part of being able to help them to be able to overcome some of the issues and get the help they need.
Mayor Rodriguez, can I just correct one point before we move forward? There was a comment made that there is a city loan. There is not actually a city loan for Bidwell Studios. It's all through a state home key grant program, which is actually focused on housing first. And that's embedded as part of the grant. There's, you know, that that there, it is actually not a requirement to have home, to have wraparound services nor have sobriety as a requirement for those funded by that grant. But there is no city loan. I just want to be sure you're clear.
Okay, thank you.
Would you have one request to speak? Judy Alexander? Thank you, Ginny.
I just, as a participant in Bidwell Studios amongst some of our other projects, I'd just like to clarify because there just seems to be always confusion about that site. HART has four units that we pay market rate of $1,100 a month for each one through our HART funds. The city in the past, two years ago, contributed $15,000 of city money to help us pay for those studios. Very much appreciated. We'll be coming back around at budget time to see what your thoughts are this year. But the 20 units that are managed by Hope Cooperative is using HUD money to finance those units. HUD is Housing First. There are, as Elaine mentioned, no requirements on any behavioral, no behavioral requirements. They do have to follow the law. That being said, it's a challenging population. It is, it brings people in from throughout Sacramento County. It's a county-state funding here of the HUD money. We fought long and hard when it was open to make sure that there were some Folsom residents there and qualified. The county came out, we were able to get, I think, six people qualified. All the rest come from around Sacramento County. The the Housing First model is different than the HART model. HART has clean and sober only living units. I will lose to drugs and alcohol every day of the week. That being said, the residence in the Hope Cooperative is permanent housing. Those people are not going to move in one, two or three years. They are permanently housed and their qualification for being there is they had to be severely mentally disabled. So you have a permanent population. And you all need to recognize that this is what we're dealing with. It has, it has issues that the police deal with. We are all in this community working to better everybody. But we have very little say in the people that are in the Hope Cooperative. And I believe that's a five-year project. I'm not sure. I could be wrong on that. But it's two different models and there's, our people should be out of there in anywhere from six to 20 months. They're moving into jobs. They're moving into housing permanently. They're got their life back together. That's a completely different situation than Hope Cooperative.
Thank you, Judy.
Sure.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the next item.
This takes you to your consent calendar this evening. And as a reminder, item four is continued.
Yeah, if nobody wants to pull anything, I'll move adoption of five through 11.
Second.
The clerk, please.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. The clerk, please call the next item.
Yeah, your next item this evening is new business item number 12. This is resolution number 10988. This is a resolution to amend the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area number two within the city of Folsom, CFD number 23, which is Folsom Ranch and related matters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Stacy Tamaney, Finance Director. The item before you tonight is asking for your consideration to amend the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area two within CFD 23. Landowners within the Folsom Plan area requested to form CFD 23 in 2020. CFD 23 includes severance separate improvement areas. They're designated as improvement area, we sometimes call it IA 1 through IA 7. And landowners have now requested to amend the rate and method of apportionment for improvement area number two. The rate and method of apportionment for improvement area two will be amended to adjust the maximum facility special tax rates on certain land use categories. There are no proposed amendments to the maximum services special tax rates. Proposed development within this improvement area includes 291 units that are zoned multifamily low density and 5.1 acres of non-residential land use. The details on the facility special tax are there at the top. It's levied through 207980, that's fiscal year 207980, at the city council's discretion. It'll be increased annually by 2%. The amended maximum facility special tax ranges from $2,124 to $2,560 for all residential units. And property tax as a percent of estimated assessed value is at 1.8%. The services special tax is not proposed to be amended. It'll be levied in perpetuity at city council's discretion. It's increased annually by the CPI not to exceed 4%. And maximum services special tax ranges from $110 to $215 for all residential units. This chart here is showing the proposed maximum facility special tax rates compared to what is currently approved. So left-hand column is what is currently approved. It's the special taxes ranging from $1,802 to $2,089 based on which land use category it's in. The amended facility special tax would range from $2,124 to $2,560, as we mentioned on the last slide. So that is the proposed amendment. This is the first step in the process. The next step will be a public hearing and that would be at your last meeting in March. And so staff is recommending approval of this resolution number 10988.
Are there any questions for Stacy?
You have no request to speak on this item.
I can move adoption of resolution number 10988.
I'll second.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. The clerk, please call the next item.
Yeah, this takes you to your last item this evening. This is old business item number 13. This will be discussion of city council budget priorities.
All right. Good evening, everymen. We came to you at your January 24th meeting with a mid-year review of the current budget as well as a presentation of departmental priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. We ask for your discretion, direction as to desire. Uh, we ask for your discretion, uh, direction as to desired big picture allocation of the general fund budget, commonly referred to as the PI that you will see up on your screen momentarily. Um, a consensus of the council asked for more time to provide that big picture de, uh, direction. And so we have scheduled this item on today's agenda for you to again discuss this issue as needed and ultimately provide that direction. As a reminder, once I receive this direction on the PI from the city council, I will, will work with the chief financial officer to review the hundreds of budget requests from all departments and then provide a preliminary budget to the council based on my professional experience and expertise. Um, and I will uh, work to fit that within the PI and ensure the city's continued financial stability and solvency. Your role as the city council will then be to review that preliminary budget, make any changes that you see fit, and then adopt the budget prior to the June, uh, prior, prior to the June thirtieth deadline. If the council does not adopt by that date, then the preliminary budget actually becomes the budget by default. Um, for many, many years, the city's PI allocation has been pretty close to what you see here. About fifty percent, uh, very appropriately, um, devoted to the, the importance of public safety. Um, about fifty percent is, uh, to public safety is what you see as being in line with most jurisdictions. Um, but I wouldn't want to presume that past practice, um, always means future practice. So that's why, um, um, I come to you every year and check it with you to make sure it still reflects your priorities. Today, we have the same request for direction that we put before you on January twenty-fourth, and it's up there on the screen. Does the city council want the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget to reflect a similar allocation of funds of, as the PI chart displayed to the left? Um, we are happy to answer any questions. Please just direct your questions to me. Um, and I will either respond myself or ask the appropriate department head to approach the podium to respond. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor so that you may begin your conversation.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay, so all that needs to be said. So the floor is open to this council.
Uh, if I can jump in, I just want to thank everybody that, uh, did a lot of hard work to prepare those presentations last time around. And Elaine, for your patience with having us like slog through it all that evening. And I, for my part, I think the way that we have allocated in the past is a perfect way to go forward. And hope that we end up at that point after we discuss this further.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski? Councilmember Roarba, any comments, issues? Okay. Councilmember Challem Chirla? I see you, Challem Chirla.
Uh, I know it's maybe the, um, the inputs has given by all the directors. I do have some recommendations. I don't think so. Um, in the budget line of two hundred and forty-eight million dollars big pie, the pie is, percentages are going to change at any extent. For example, I know, I was asking about some volunteer coordinate. It's a small amount compared to the sixteen million they are spending, a small amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So in terms of the pie, I'm not seeing any major changes happening to that pie. But when it goes to the details of the department heads they presented, I may have some recommendations, you know, based on the things I'm hearing from the residents. I think this coming budget, our, um, city administration focus on incorporating some of those requests from the directors, if there is a possibility. So those are the things I'm going to make. But police is going to go from twenty-six to twenty-nine? No, that's not the thing. Uh, if that's the question we are asking, looking at this pie chart.
So clearly you are, you're fine with the, even it's currently the percentage.
The, the high level, again, those are in millions of dollars percentages, right? So the things we are asking is, you know, uh, one resource or it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Councilmember Aquino?
I'm also fine with continuing to cut the pie this way.
Councilmember Roarba?
Yeah, I have lots of discussion on this. Um, so I'm gonna start with, um, one of the reasons I was elected, because I came in with a fresh perspective. Um, so I'm looking at everything with new eyes, and I want to mimic Chris Corde, Gorda, Corda left. Um, but he said, there's no place I'd rather be, and there's literally no place I'd rather live right now than in Folsom. And, um, and be an empty nester and, um, just enjoy this beautiful city and the beautiful people in it. Um, you know, three weeks ago, we were presented, um, you know, different things. And, you know, the policy is to ensure that the city maintains a prudent level of financial resources in order to protect against having to reduce service level, levels in the event of an emergency. That's the general reserves. I absolutely hundred percent agree with that. I also agree with that consumers are surprisingly resilient right now. Um, they maintain and even, maintain their spending level and even increasing that level, or not, or even increasing that level. Um, what we saw last, uh, three weeks ago, um, was eye-opening. And it was the first time, and I think over year, many, many mean years, that the, um, department heads had been able to um, relay to the city council and the public what their needs and wants were. And I thought that was a, a, a very good thing that we started here. Um, there were twenty million a, in ask for unfounded or under, or underfunded infrastructure and facility maintenance that the city has deferred over the years. That includes storm drains, roads, parks, trails, and city facilities. And I would actually also add that that includes our staff and succession planning. I would add that our IT and succession planning are essential infrastructure. We're not able to be, these are from the slides from three weeks ago. We're not able, able to be competitive in employee compensation. Um, we don't have a capital renovation fund, an IT infrastructure fund, and we have growing, ever-growing service needs. At Cal Cities last week, um, um, we learned again, it was really great. We traveled to the University of City, and it was new council members, new, um, mayor, um, conference. And one of the things, it was really nice to hear again, that, um, as we go through the budget, we're supposed to look at the history of actual revenues and expenses. Our budget should always reflect the community's priorities. That was a number one. Number two is good estimates of revenues, expenses by fund, which we do. And again, provide actual revenue expense history to gauge accuracy of forecast. One of our jobs as council members is to make sure that our, um, our projections are getting close to our actuals year by year. So I went through the budget and, um, I did an eleven-year deep dive from twenty-one, from year, from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, all the way back to twenty-eleven to twenty-twelve. Um, three weeks ago, um, there was quite a bit of push, pushback about, um, um, one-time funds versus continuing funds. I agree. We should never have a long-term goal of funding continuing funds or, um, ongoing, ongoing expenses with one-time funds. I absolutely agree. So what I was looking, I wanted to see what the actual numbers were. And what I found out, and this, just to clarify, this is all numbers that are actual and in the budget that you can find on the website. So what I found out is that we were underestimating our revenue by forty-two million dollars, over forty-two million dollars, and underestimating our expenses by twenty million dollars and change. So our actually, our actual net revenue over eleven years is twenty-two million dollars more than we've estimated. So I, I, I did speak to a few people in the staff, and, um, that is why our general fund reserves has been able to grow. What I'm arguing today, or what I would like to discuss, is that that's about two million dollars in excess every year that we're not prioritizing as a council. And so I see that as revenue that continues to come in. Our reserves are five million in our risk management and over twenty-three million in our general reserve. Right now, we're at fifteen percent mandate. That's almost thirteen million dollars, I believe. Somewhere around there, thirteen million dollars over our mandated reserves. Even if we go to seventeen, which I'm totally for, for a mandate of seventeen percent, which the state recommends, that would put us at seventeen point eight five, seventeen, almost eighteen million dollars in reserves that we are mandated to have. Those should absolutely hundred percent always be protected. Having our mandate got us through the Great Recession. Um, we sailed through the pandemic, and I think that is very fiscally sound and conservative. Outside of that, with all of the things that, um, the city is going through, we're in a very fragile state. When I went through the departments and talked to different people, um, we're not competitive at all in almost every single department. We have, our aging workforce, people that are working, have been working here decades, that, um, people that have been working here decades that are doing, have been continued a, asked to be, to do more with less. There, some of them are doing two jobs ver, you know, versus their one title. When we lose those people in the next two to four years, we're in a very, again, fragile state. We're not only lis, missing in our, um, institutional lo, knowledge, but we're also not going to be able to hire at the top notch because we are not competitive in our pay. So my argument today, not only in that, but in everything else the community screamed for while I was campaigning last year. And I spoke to a lot of people. One of the things, just before I go to this part, one of the things I hear often is the sales tax increase. I heard that. I went through the last two budgets, um, before I was on council, and this budget, and then have gone through more. And that is always an option. But I think if we have thirteen million in extra, extra funds, or if you leave the five million in the risk management fund alone, then, then eight million dollars. And again, if we go to seventeen percent, that's still five million dollars in excess revenue. If we have that kind of money sitting there, I don't think we're being good stewards of our taxpayer money, taxpayers' money at this moment. And I think in order to argue to our taxpayers that we need more of their money, we need to dip back in their pocket, we should be investing right now, chipping away at this, and showing them where our pri, that our priorities are their priorities, and show them what we will do with their investment. Because right now, we're just holding tight on it, and we're getting ready to ask them for more. And so what I would like to do is chip away at this. There's a lot of one-time ask for soft, the, the thing that scared me the last couple of weeks was our, uh, software, high-tech city. And we are one of the least high-tech cities. Um, if that makes sense. Um, and that concerns me. Um, and then going back to, um, our people. So I, I mean, I have a lot of asks. Um, my first one is the police department. Now, the eighty percent, overwhelming eighty percent of the people wanted more police on our street. And I am suggesting that we fund the fi, the four officers and the one sergeant to fill out South of Fifty. Um, as Stacy and I talked about, um, you know, that increase in property tax should go to South of Fifty. So this revenue that I believe continue, that has been proven that consistently comes in, I believe should, we should be able to fill out that beat, uh, South of Fifty with our police department. Number one priority of people. And one of the biggest complaints, too, not of our PD department, but that there wasn't more. Um, the other thing, I mean, I have a, a, a lot of things here, but I think we should fund every software request. The city clerk asked for thirteen thousand four hundred dollars total. That's it, ongoing expenses. To me, for two different software things that were completely, completely helped the consumer experience and their experience. To me, that's a no-brainer. The library doesn't have lighting out, or exterior lighting is really bad. They're redoing their carpet right now, and so it would be the perfect time to do their baseboards. That's ten thousand dollars. We should do that. I went and visited the library, and the kids, uh, they have three kids PCs, which I didn't understand it until I looked at it. And I think there was only one working at the time, because a, a, like a, maybe a six-year-old, seven-year-old came up and, um, tried to get on one, but it blinked out. Um, another kid was on the other one. The third one is broken. Um, and he lost interest and walked away. We're losing, we're gonna lose that. This, our library is so amazing that, um, kids are flocking there. Storytime was completely packed. Um, and thi, this is, this is an essential to me. For ten thousand five hundred, we should be funding that. These are, programs are completely filled at the library with our youth all the way to our adults. Um, and then I would say our information system. I think Stacy had put wireless network replacement at the top. Um, I talked to YK just briefly about this, and I don't understand the IT stuff, so I can't really prioritize that. But, um, I would say maybe that's a conversation Elaine, you could have that. This is definitely something that I think that we should fund. We have to protect ourselves for our future. Um, and then they also asked for software for thirty thousand. That's a one-time fund. That's a no-brainer. Um, Parks and Rec, volunteer coordinator, that was the number one ask. To me, this is an essential thing, eighty-five thousand dollars every, ongoing for every year. But imagine the amount of people we could help, we could have, help us throughout the city to volunteer. You can see by community, by the Community Service Day, people flock to that. So if we have someone coordinating that and helping out Parks and Rec and other areas, I think that would be a great thing to add. And also helps them with succession planning in some way, shape, or form. Um, I also think the facility repairs maintenance. I'm sorry, uh, Lorraine, I know you asked for a lot in your budget, but, um, trying to kind of figure out, I would love to add, add, add more people. I'd love to add a maintenance worker. But the facility repairs maintenance for a hundred thou, thousand dollars a year, I think is a great idea. We have an aging infrastructure now. We're at that tipping point where we're not new anymore. And we're not new South of Fifty anymore. So where are we gonna land in that? Um, a fire. I think we have about half of our, uh, fire department is, within the last eighteen months, they've hired. We just had a training accident, um, two months ago, where our, our guy went to the hospital and was in the hospital for several days, twice. Um, so our division chief training, I think that's, that's an essential. Our public works, um, we definitely need a section manager, I believe. So there's another add. They have a lot of aging out that's gonna happen, and there is little succession planning going on, it seems like. Or there needs to be some going on, that we're filling some positions that haven't been filled since the Great Recession. And we're allowing that institutional law list to be passed on before it's too late. I'm not talking about a ton of people. I'm talking chip by, one by one. And as the year goes on, or as the years go by, we can add more as our revenue grows. Environmental water and water, I think that's all was already asked in their funds. I absolutely agree with the water distribution and water utility. Um, and the re, the four reclassifications, that goes along with, um, um, that goes along with succession planning. I have more, but I will take a breath and let everybody else, um, let me just see one more. I know, um, I, I think one of my colleagues was interested in having the library go six days. Um, that would add a forty thousand dollar, um, ongoing funds. So all of my, um, ongoing funds would total about one point two million dollars. All of my one-time choices would total about, again, one point two million dollars. And so that, that's my priority list. Um, that's what I came prepared for. And, um, and, and I see that we have the funding source. If we used one point two million dollars in our fun, from the one-time funds, um, I think we would be, set ourselves a lot better up. I'm sorry, I, I, I do know English. Um, set ourselves up better for our future. And then our ongoing funds, um, another one point two, that revenue, I have shown that the actual numbers are over two million dollars. And if you take out the COVID year, our unestimated net revenue is, is almost three point four million dollars. So I'm, it's not out of line to what our actuals are saying. Um, so I'll rest my case at this point.
Stacy, I have a question. Do you happen to have this slide that shows, um, the projections of the next few years? Like it's the five-year forecast slide?
Mayor, if you'd like, we could bring up that slide and maybe a few others to talk about the reserve and some of these issues.
Because I think
I'm happy to do that.
Because I think when we look at revenue, if you're not looking at ex, at, at expenses, I think it's hard to, it's easy to say, oh, look at this, we have this extra funds. But when I look at the budget, I, I look at forecasted, the five-year forecasted, that shows, that shows where we're going to have some shortcuts that, um,
Yeah, Madam Mayor, can I just call a timeout here for just a minute, please?
Yes.
Um, we are a charter city, and if you read the charter, it is very clear. This council is not tasked with crafting the budget. We are tasked with adopting the budget. The city manager and her staff are tasked with creating the budget based on and adhering to financial policies that are currently in place. My suggestion tonight is that we let the city manager do her job. Secondly, I would suggest that we bring those financial policies that were adopted in two thousand four. To my knowledge, they have not been updated. Bring those back for a separate discussion so we can have a substantive discussion such as the suggestion that council member Roarba bought up that I happen to agree with. For example, increasing the general fund reserve from fifteen percent of expenditures to seventeen percent of expenditures. For example, increasing the general fund reserve from fifteen percent of expenditures to seventeen percent of expenditures. That should be a separate discussion. In my opinion, we're doing, um, strategic planning in two days. It is premature to start talking about one-time funds or ongoing funds, or, you know, start saying this is our priority, or this is our priority, when we have strategic planning in two days. So with all due respect to my colleagues, could we just answer the question for the city manager and let her do her job? I expressed, I wanted to keep the budget, the pie the same. Vice Mayor expressed that, Councilmember Kozlowski expressed that.
And my sentiments are to keep it the same right now.
Yeah, I have one comment, though. Um, you know, thank you, Sarah, for explaining that. If we are going to, again, on sixteenth, talk about the public's priority, I'm going to take one example because, uh, um, my colleague mentioned, community is asking for six-days library. I'm not talking how to divide the budget here. I'm representing the community views publicly so that our city manager can hear when they craft the budget, they can understand. If a couple of my colleagues agrees, let's move the library days from five days to six days. Whatever that expense, I'm not going to get in. I'm just bringing, that's what I want to do in this session. If we are going to do that on sixteenth strategic session, I'm okay with that. If not, at least our city manager has to hear before it is too late. Again, last time I did ask for something and people were asking me, show me the money. No, I can't show the money. I'm only bringing what community would like to see as a next-level growth. I just want to make that one example. I do have a couple of more here, but I'll pass. You can definitely help me, you know, on that.
Well, I, I respect that. Um, and the city manager and her staff, they're, they're well aware of what the community's priorities are. They, they conducted the survey, they know all that. The challenge that we're dealing with here is that we're trying to feed all these mouths with a medium-sized pizza. No matter how we slice this pizza, nobody is getting everything that they need. Nobody is going to be full or satisfied. Nobody is starving, but everybody is still hungry. The truth is, we need a large or an extra-large sized pizza, and we don't have that. We have a medium. Can we just please let the city manager do her job? If there's consensus that this is how we want to cut the pizza, let's let her go do that. She brings it back to us in a couple of months, and then at that time, we can say, you know what? No, we'd rather you take this out here and put this in here, but, but we are not going to craft the budget from the ground up at the council level. That is in a direct violation of our charter.
So, I just want to make one more comment.
Could I just clarify that, um, Councilmember Aquino is exactly right. The charter says that the city manager develops the budget. You all adopt the budget. So giving me big-picture direction like this as confirming the pie, I go back and I bring back what I think is the best combination of things to stay within that pie, given our current resources. That doesn't mean that is the budget. It is my best attempt at it per the charter, which is my job. If you start telling me respectfully, you're giving me this laundry list of put all this stuff in the budget that would normally be at my discretion, it is inherently not the city manager's preliminary budget. It is the city council's preliminary budget, and that is inappropriate, and it's not what is called for in the charter. And it's said very respectfully. I mean, this is not me having some turf war, this is what our charter says that I need to adhere to. So all we're trying to check on is, are you reasonably com- comfortable with these allocations? I will go through my process where I basically disappear with, you know, Stacy and, you know, Terry and Allison for four or five weeks and comb through hundreds of requests, and based on thirty years of professional experience, come back and say, this is what I think it should look like. And then e- even at that point, it is not final. You then take that budget and you say, thank you, city manager, that's your best attempt. And you make changes if that's your desire and you adopt it. But I think we've gotten flipped here of almost the city council is trying to dictate what my preliminary budget looks like. And that's concerning to me because that's not what the charter says.
Can I just make a comment? So I, I, as I began to hear things from the community, um, of conversations that may have taken place or presentations that took place, I, I had to go back and pull this information about, about sort of exactly what you're just saying, the municipal code. Title two, administration and personnel. Two point zero eight, four, four, zero. Powers and duties of the city manager is to prepare the annual budget. Title three, revenue and finance. Three point zero, two point zero, three zero, budget. The annual budget shall be prepared by the city manager with the assistance of the finance director. And you guys can read more farther down. The, the third part of that section was a complete financial plan for the fiscal year for all city funds, agencies, and activities in such form as the city manager shall deem desirable to pr- provide the information desired by the city council. Article three, city manager. Three point zero three, powers and duties of the city manager. The city manager shall be responsible to the city council for the proper administration while afford to the city. If you go down to D, annual budget, shall annually prepare, submit, and administer the budget and capital improvement plan of the city as set up by the charter. And the last, and a couple of weeks ago, I went to the, uh, city ma- uh, city council on New Mayor's, it was an academy. And one of the sections there was financial responsibilities, city revenue. And it really gave a little clear outline of what the mayor and council members do. Oversight, budget review, approval. Roles of the key staff, city manager, budget preparation, uh, financial recommendations, fiscal policy recommendations, your own admin. So I think what we have going on right here is that we have crossed the line of what our roles are as council members and what the role is of the city manager. And so we, I, I, I'm gonna bring it, we need to let the city manager do her job. The boundaries are, I, I think are very clear on the charter, and, um, I'm willing to entertain the motion.
I still have a comment.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to make one comment. I know last meeting, all our directors under your direction worked so hard, and I praised them because I was one of the staffers in state. It's a lot of work. And they presented, and at the end, we, this pie comes into picture. I'm not denying or disagreeing on that. Since they presented first time to me, I'm, I'm, this is my third year. I just want to rec- give my feedback based on what I hear from the eighty-four thousand people when we are going in the community. So Mayor, I just want to, you know, uh, uh, understand why we put that here as an agenda item is that just for the confirmation of the pie, I, I just agreed already, the confirmation of the pie, it is not going to be major changes because some of the views we are hearing from, uh, public, our streets, cleanliness of the extra vacuum. I just want to bring those kind of things to your attention here. And since they are presented, I want to voice on behalf of eighty-four thousand people. It's not that anyway we are getting into the charter or the rules and responsibilities.
We're definitely across the line.
I, I, I res- I respect that, Councilmember Charla, and respectfully, your chance to do that is once I've developed the preliminary budget. And, and then you are welcome to feed in, do whatever you want with it, but it's my budget until it's your budget. And then you ultimately adopt it, that's, that's how it goes.
Right, that's why I'm asking, right? This is the first time directors came, and, a- again, in my two-years term, right? First time, we are hearing from the heart's mouth, and, and just stay calm and agree to this one and come back when you present if that particular one or two or three or four items, whatever I feel like in the best interest of residents, to bring it at that point. It's not on strategy discussions. It's going to be up in May. Am I right to say that?
So we will bring the preliminary budget in May?
In May, right? So it's not in, that's what I want to understand here because, you know, things are evolving for a, a, a greater good here. You know, transparency, which our mayor is, you know, number one objective, I hear about from mayor's speech, right? So that's why I'm asking those clarifying questions here. It's not that questioning anybody, it's not that, you know, crossing the line. I know, I hear you loud and clear, Mayor, but on the same time, since the agenda item is here, if the purpose is only to agree on that high level, two hundred and forty-eight million dollars budget in that pie, I have no more comments. Otherwise, if it is, you know, give some feedback based on the director's presentation, they worked hard. I mean, they, they also received from the community as well. That's why I'm here to make my comments, that's all. I think, uh, I see my colleague also making the similar comments.
I'd like to offer a motion that we direct the city manager, we can discuss the motion afterwards. Um, I'd like to make a motion that the, um, city manager go with her staff and prepare a preliminary budget, as is normally the case, using the pie chart as depicted on the screen right now, in those same percentages.
Is there no discussion? Because I still want to discuss, not necessarily the motion, but what, the feedback that I received, because it was directed at me.
Okay, I, I interrupted the, the discussion so that I could make a motion um, because the, unfortunately, our discussion has gotten a little bit heated, I think, um, for not that much reason. The, with respect to everybody, the, um, suggestions that you made are valid, they're ones that you've made. Um, and we end up making recommendations like that continuously throughout the year to the city manager and the staff um, because individual things come up as we go along. And there's a long process that the budget goes through to be developed. And what we got this year was a little bit different and out of order. And as a result, it made it seem like this was the last bite of the apple, and that is not the case. Normally, um, we take the deep dive into things once we have a preliminary budget to look at, and we don't have that right now. Um, so we're trying to do the job of somebody that we have entrusted to do that job. So that's why I made the motion so that we could suspend the discussion, but if anybody would, if you'd like to comment on that, go for it.
I'll discuss it on, off the motion. Um, I appreciate what everyone has to say, but I also have a role here, and my role is to hold the one employee accountable. All five of us should be doing that. So I did a deep dive on our actual numbers, our net revenue. Not our revenue, but our net revenue, our revenue minus expenses, the net revenue. And, um, and so I wanted to give that feedback. And as said, that, um, our city manager may or may not know the community's priorities, but we are their voice. So we have a right to, I'm not, I don't want to craft the budget, but I was giving you details to give you a general idea of my priorities. And at no time do I not have a right to say that. I'm not telling you what to put in a budget. I wasn't doing that, uh, uh, Councilmember Aquino. Um, but I am, this, this is my priority as a council member. These were my priorities. This is the gen- in general, what I would do, and I gave some details. I have every right at any time in any council mem- meeting to say my point of view. Um, again, I'm not trying to craft the budget, but I'm trying to be a voice for the people that rep- that, that elected me with their concern of, over what was happening with the budget. And also the accountability of the city manager. So, you know, I am interested in what's going on, how are we chipping away at our succession planning? And that was one thing that I wanted to bring up. I will, I will hope to see that reflected in the budget. Again, I'm not crafting it. I am telling her the opinion of one council member. There's five council members in the end. We will get a draft budget, and we will pass it, and it will only pass through the majority of the, uh, council members. I am one voice, and so at no time am I trying to micromanage, but you, you, but for sure, I'm gonna voice the concerns of my residents that have spoken to me and my own concerns. So, um, I understand what you're saying that I, but I don't believe any line was crossed. Um, I wouldn't do that. I'm not specifically telling her, I am specifically giving my point of view and my opinion. And that is what the five of us are supposed to do. It isn't all supposed to be rosy and flowers all the time. There should be some tension in this relationship, out of respect. So I appreciate very much, Elaine, that you said respectfully, because I, I a hundred percent agree that you, you, you mean that, and so do I. But, um, you know, as far as the other council members go, I appreciate, Mike, that you called the motion because I think you're right. Um, I'm not heated about this. I, you know, I, I, I did my research and I found out what I wanted to fa- find out, and, you know, I wanted to relay that to the city manager. Um, and, and I guess that's enough.
Well, you know, Anna, I, I think it'll be disciplining, and I'm gonna provide the feedback. You have met with service, you have met with several groups, you have met with the business community, you've met with the, this, uh, Folsom Historic District Association, and you've met with, um, the Rotary Club. And so some of the feedback you've given is that there's been a, you know, this excess of revenue and that we're sitting on some twenty million dollars that has been, and the interpretation that some of these individuals got is that we have twenty million dollars sitting out there and that we should be spending that for the, uh, for the residents' priorities. And it has created a lot of confusion with the public in terms of, does Folsom have twenty million dollars to spend? Or has Folsom's misused twenty million dollars? And so there's, uh, you know, it, it, um, there's, uh, uh, some damage control that needs to be, um, given back to the community that, that, the, uh, communication that you've given. And it, it's, it's been a little concerning when I started getting phone calls with people asking me, do you have twenty million dollars that is an excess that you need to spend?
Uh, that, you're making a lot of assumptions over, um, you, you were at one talk that I gave.
No, these are three meetings that you went to.
Correct.
Message was.
Correct. And I said the same thing there that I said here. On actual numbers, the revenue, two million dollars, that we had us twenty-three million in reserves and five million in risk management, that our minimum mandate was fifteen percent, and that we were probably gonna go to seventeen percent. I only stated facts, so you're making a lot of assumptions, and I, uh, if people have concerns, they have a right to call us and, and get clarity. And, um, a- a- and I'm glad, I'm glad they're calling and asking about this.
Um, may I ask, it, it would be helpful, I think. Um, you mentioned a lot of numbers, I don't know if you gave those to staff in advance. I think they have, um, need to have the opportunity to look at those numbers, to research it, and then, um, the city manager could share them with the rest of us.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll tell you, I, I, like I said, I got from twenty-eleven to twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two, those eleven years of actual numbers, projected, it says projected in the budget, and then it says actual. That's why it only goes to twenty-one, twenty-two. And actually, in twenty-one, twenty-two was the un- the only unaudited number. Um, all the others were actuals, so they have all those numbers, it's very simple. It was just the projected versus the actual num- net revenue.
So respectfully, Councilwoman Rohrbach, I can explain that fairly easily. Yes, revenues did exceed expectations in those years. However, we were below the council's fifteen percent reserve policy. Um, and so the funds automatically first go to replenish and try to reach, chip away at getting back to that fifteen percent. So every year, as there were extra, those funds first go to get to the fifteen percent. And then they're also supposed to go to deferred maintenance beyond that, and that piece we haven't even been able to achieve. So there's this whole process of, over years before I was even city manager, through the Great Recession, of just trying to get, and we went as low as, what was the lowest percentage that we hit, Stacy? Okay, so we got as low as six percent. I lived through that here, I know how terrifying that was. I have dear friends who no longer work here because, you know, they were laid off during those times. Um, and so you, what you're calling surplus or excess is actually, was, was, uh, very, um, prudently in past city councils, having a tension per the financial policies to get back up to that fifteen percent. We then had one year where we got above fifteen percent, and then COVID slammed us down. And thank goodness, we had those previous city councils who had built up our reserve because we would have not survived that Great Recession where we got precariously low, and it was precarious, it was very scary. And the pandemic, as you know, that I've been dealing with since almost the moment I became city manager, honestly, took a huge hit to the city, and thank goodness, again, that we had general, the, the reserve and ARPA dollars that kind of helped to fix some things. Um, so I, I think what you're calling extra was what we, we were required by financial policy to feed the reserve back. And you get into some really dangerous territory when you start ignoring the need to have a reserve. Um, Stacy, how, how many months can a city survive with, you know, say you're at, you know, fifteen percent reserve? I mean, how, what, what is, tell me, tell me how that far that can take us?
Well, it would depend on the, how extreme the recession was.
Yeah.
So we used seventeen million dollars in four years during the Great Recession.
Right. And, and I want to point out that, and I can, you know, I can go through all kinds of presentations and, and numbers, but, um, we're not even, we've already come to this council, I've been talking to this council for eighteen months about the seriousness of our financial situation. That, those are database conversations. That is not just numbers I'm picking up out of the air, they're actual real numbers, these are real concerns. Um, and we're not even looking at how a risk, we, we're already showing a structural deficit. We're already showing that we will dip into the reserve in the, in the very near future, and then we will continue to dip into it. continue to dip into it at higher and higher levels just to cover what we're doing. And we haven't even figured into that, the possibility of a recession, because we don't know what that'll look like yet. But it's coming. We're already feeling it. I think, you know, those of you that are small business owners at this table are probably feeling it. So respectfully, I'm saying that, you know, we do have a professional staff. You know, we have an amazing chief financial officer that I, you know, I'm so grateful for every day. And, you know, we, we do this business for a reason and have been doing it for decades. And we're doing our best to build on the excellent work previous city councils do that can honestly, and I'm not fear mongering, that was a word that was thrown out last time. What I'm trying to say is that this city council, you wield a lot of power. You could with three or four decisions undo the work of 20 years of work that ensured that we got through that recession intact. And residents didn't even really notice during that time, honestly. We were in here like, you know, doing all these crazy dances to get through. But the residents weren't even aware because, you know, we were able to rely on those reserve funds. So I just ask, you know, to be very prudent and cautious. And again, to please let the, the actual process work, which is let me bring a preliminary budget that I think reflects your identified priorities in a community where I've lived for 33 years. And then you react to it and it's your budget. Go for it if you want to change it.
Madam Mayor, I believe that my motion inferred all of those things that were just expressed.
So I want to comment, Elaine, because you said, you said a few things. So I agree that we should be very prudent about the numbers. So I, I think that we shouldn't talk about this anymore, but you did infer that I wasn't being prudent and I was saying things. And, and I wasn't. Since 2016, we've had 18% in our general fund. Our mandate is 15. I think that we should start trusting our policies. So over and above 18, we should be, you know, with that revenue, that excess revenue should be going into our infrastructure. And so for the last five or six years, that hasn't been, that hasn't been done. And I think because there is all this fear from the Great Recession, and then we went into the pandemic, but we sailed through the pandemic. So, so I was being prudent with my numbers because I think we should trespass councils on the policies that got us through some dire times. So I just want to comment on that. But you're right. I mean, you know, you craft the budget. These are my, these are my opinions. And you can take them just as opinions. But I also, you know, have a voice as one of the five councilmen that represent the residents of the city.
Of course. And I was never trying to say that.
No, I know you didn't.
I don't think I ever uttered the words that you don't, or you're not allowed to say these things.
No, you didn't.
I'm just trying to explain, there is a process defined by the charter for developing a budget. And please let your professional staff do their work, is the respectful request.
I just have one more comment before I call the roll. If there's an anticipation that we could depend on the potential sales tax, I just want to give some numbers that relate to Folsom. So in the recent Measure A, last November of 2022, Folsom supported Measure A by only 36%. In 2018, Folsom supported Measure E with only 29%. So if we're looking at the potential of a sales tax in the next couple of years, it is going to be a very hard sell to a very highly educated community about where we are financially. So when I look at a little bit of an excess, to me, it's, well, it's, I don't know where we're going to be in the next couple of years. And so I, and that's what just makes me a little concerned. So, okay, with that, with the court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Kozlowski.
Yes.
Roba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalantchela.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. With the court, please call the next item.
Takes you to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. The Scott Road Extension Project is now complete, improving travel between Highway 50 and the community of Rancho Marietta. The project connects Scott Road to the Prairie City Road, White Rock Road intersection, and adds a new roundabout, yay, Sarah, at the Prairie City State Vehicular Recreation Area. The project also includes new traffic, new traffic signal modifications and improved intersections. Tax season means that a lot of personal identifying information is being sent via the mail. Traditionally, running from January through April, tax season also tends to bring a spike in mail theft. And I think that you've probably seen some social media coverage of that. So help prevent mail theft by collecting your mail daily. If you're traveling, ask a neighbor to pick it up for you, or ask the post office to hold it. Also consider signing up for USPS informed delivery. The Folsom Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, volunteer program plays a key role in the city of Folsom's goal to protect and advance community safety. The Folsom Fire Department is recruiting applicants to the CERT training class starting March 7. Those who compete, complete the required five-week training course and pass a background check are eligible to volunteer for the CERT team. And finally, great thanks to our amazing Friends of the Folsom Library. The Friends of the Folsom Library recently gave an additional $6,712 to the Folsom Public Library to purchase new books. The funds were raised at the Friends Fall Book Sale and the Renaissance Fair where they sell vintage books. So much thanks to our Friends of the Folsom Library partners. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aquino?
Just a couple of report outs on our regional committees. So I attended my first meeting for the Sacramento Sewer District and the Regional Sanitation Board, I guess, district. Those two agencies are going to merge. That's the plan. So they're going to be going through the LAFCO process this year. Hopefully, that will result in some efficiencies and maybe some cost savings. And then as far as the Air Quality Management District, at our last meeting, I did share that we sent a couple of staff members on a tour for roundabouts and talked about, you know, us looking at it in terms of reducing speed and fatal accidents and all that kind of stuff, but asked that the Air District look at it in terms of air quality, improving air quality and reducing greenhouse gas emissions and stuff with the potential maybe of helping cities like us qualify for some grant funding. And that executive director is very, very supportive. And so we have a meeting scheduled for next month with them. Also, you may be getting some of this feedback from your regional boards, but because the governor is ending the state of emergency from the pandemic, boards like AQMD, you'll no longer be able to do, have people appear remotely unless you're doing it under this new bill, AB 2449. So anyway, the Air District is going to be putting out kind of a, I guess, a suggestion to try to use some kind of hybrid meeting where, for example, they would, instead of me driving and, you know, having vehicle emissions, all that kind of stuff, they want to be the example for this. So they're suggesting that, like for me, I would participate in the AQMD meeting from this chamber, which of course, we would have to publicly notice. But, so I'll work with you on that, Elaine. And then I'm now the vice chair of that board. So I'm happy about that, this year and next year. And then hopefully, we'll be the chair in 2025. And we haven't had a chair since Jeff Starsky in 2005 and '06. So hopefully, that will be good news for Folsom. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chalantchela?
Yes, ma'am. No, I'll start with a Happy Valentine's Day to our Folsom and, you know, everyone here. You know, thank you for being here. I know our better halves are waiting out there. We got to go. Mayor, your State of the City speech, awesome. I was here and the same evening, I flew and I waited for our mayors, you know, to give her all the cheers and support. Those 10 points you have made, it's awesome. Thank you. And bringing the community people and recognizing them during that time, thank you again. The, one more point, I don't have much other than just sharing my visit. But Valentine's Day, I got to be quick. I hope cooperative, Elaine, see whether we can bring them to our diocese. If we have the, I don't know, is it, power is a too strong word. We have those homeless people out there. And whether it is a taxpayer's, state level, federal level, or city level, bottom line, it's our money. How effectively the dollars are being, you know, used, whether they are, you know, changing their behaviors or not. I know Sarah and I visited, you know, even before also. So I want to hear from them, how it is running, how it is working, right? I hope, you know, my colleagues are, you know, open to just to hear from them and hope cooperative coming and presenting their success stories or their challenges. I want that one. And the last but not least, I was on three weeks' visit to my hometown in India. You know, it's awesome. It's, you know, after five and a half years, I visited there. It's a pleasure. And here is my new look, FYK. And it's awesome. The one notable thing for our community here, I met the mayor of my town and we exchanged some good ideas. I think they're learning from us. That's a good point. I want to, you know, bring, you know, our administration, how we run, and our police department, how we run here, and homeless CSD. You know, they learn quite a bit. It is a three-hour session to my hometown mayor and their administration. I want to just to, you know, send that, you know, thanks from them to all of you and our administration here. With that, you know, good evening and again, Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski?
I will just take my time to ask everybody to come to a full and complete stop at stop signs and traffic signals when required to, and then only proceed once the way in front of you is clear. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Roba?
Yeah, I just want to comment. I, there's only one major department that I haven't been to yet. But I have had, I mentioned the library earlier. They couldn't have been more welcoming and seeing all the kids come in for story time. And then the school kids come in after visiting the zoo, seeing some teens. But the, the use of the library is amazing. We need to protect that asset. And also hearing that the programs are almost always full, if not waitlisted. Also visited the, Lorraine took me to the Senior Center, which is also an art center, which is also a lot of other things. And the art in there is wonderful. It changes all the time. I had no idea. The Senior Center is welcoming and warm. And everybody up front, your staff is amazing. And Public Works, who was the first department to give me a hat, it was really great meeting all your people, but especially touring the corp yard. We have some really fantastic, really smart people working down there and really fun guys. Looking at how the signals are managed was amazing. The sign shop was totally fun. And, you know, you have a really great staff. So that was such a pleasure to be able to walk through. I don't want to miss anybody, but if I did, I, well, I've been on, through the police department several times. Of course, I think those guys are so professional and amazing. And the fire department as well, the guys I've got to meet there. So I'll report back about the community development. But there you are right there. And then thank you, Stacy, for your meeting. So.
All right. I'll break mine short. So tomorrow is February 15. It is National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. So send out a thank you to Officer Morgan Sears and Officer Jerris Perez for their hard work. I actually met them when I was chaperoning a dance at Folsom High School. And I was really glad to hear that they have, I have a genuine interest in making a positive connection with students there. In recognition that February is Black History Month, here's some history. In 1844, William Leedstorf, an Afro-Caribbean businessman from Yerba Buena, was granted 35,000 acres along the south side of the American River in northeastern Sacramento County by Mexican Governor Michel Torrena. Leedstorf intends to operate, intended to operate the kettle raising enterprise on the property that would produce Beban Heights. He would die in 1948 before his dream was realized. In 1849, a small group of African-American miners established one of the earliest mining claims in Sacramento County as Negro Bar on property once owned by Leedstorf on the south bank of the American River, what is now Folsom, California. I had an opportunity to meet with the Friends of the Folsom Parkway. They are a local nonprofit that established in 1991 that served as a steward of the parkways in Folsom. Their mission is to make citizens aware of the parkway, raise funds, educate the community on parkway issues, influence developmental proposals, identify areas of Folsom worthy of inclusion in the parkway system. To learn more about them, visit FriendsOfTheFolsomParkways.org. I attended the Cal Cities, the New Mayors and Council Members Academy a couple of weeks ago. And I attended last year on Zoom. And I got to attend this year at Universal City. And it was so great to make some of these connections and new friendships. They had a list of great topics. And then lastly, I just want to say that I, I'm really glad that we are a team that can agree to disagree. And that we, tomorrow is a new day and with new problems. And so with that, I will close our meeting at 8:14.